K N W V ninety point five, Clarkston, Louis.
Seventeen. Joining me today is John Weber, sitting in for Walter Steed and Gina Terusio. Gary Redner's representing the city staff. We'll start off today's program with item number one, which is approval of the minutes from March twenty seventh, twenty seventeen.
I think I was here, was I not?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to move to approve those.
Okay. Are you abstaining?
I was happy.
Yes, okay, so the majority of us will approve those minutes and we'll move on to item two, which is the dispersment report for March twenty seventeen. And Gary J. Redner's in charge of that.
Thank you much, and I will delegate to the Assistant Finance Director.
And looking at the major expenditures for March, they represent approximately ninety-four percent of the total, which was two million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eighty-nine dollars. Payroll came in at the largest expense of one million, four hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three. And if you look through professional services, the largest bulk of that was our WiCOM dispatching services contract. That was for January through June, and that came in at two hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars. Other major expenditures were our vehicles. We purchased two three-quarter ton trucks, one for police and one for fire. Each of those were thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And then the other largest expenditure is Gullis Construction, and that was for the partial payment for the downtown restrooms, and that was seventy-five thousand. Other than that, everything else was pretty straightforward.
Well, I don't see any extra zeros on any of these numbers, so.
I would move to accept the dispersment report.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Motion carries. We'll sign off on that. The third item on today's agenda is the second quarter financial report from January first to March thirty-first of twenty seventeen for fiscal year twenty seventeen. Sarah Banks will fill us in on the details of that as well.
Okay. Looking at the report, everything is pretty much on par. As you're going through, it's about, it should be about fifty percent unless there's something that's already at a hundred, which would just be our transfers that we did at the beginning of the year. Everything else is in that forty to fifty range unless it's, there's some of the capital outlay, which we're just getting started on. It's just now the season that we're coming into, so that's a little bit shy. Next quarter, you should see that all caught up, and everything should be approximately seventy-five percent. So if you have questions, you can come in on that.
We still have forty-two million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-four cents in the bank, so we're not broke yet, right?
No, correct.
Okay. That's good. Entertaining motion to approve the report?
So moved.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. On to item number four, Lata Recovery Center Funding Request. Gary, tell us the details of that. Maybe Daryl Kine is going to come up and talk, talk about that.
Yeah, this is, introduce Daryl Kine, the Executive Director of the Lata Recovery Center. As you recall, they had their annual fundraising breakfast here a couple of weeks ago, and at that time, Daryl indicated that they have a specific project down at the Recovery Center that they would like to have some assistance from the council on, so we invited him to come in and make his presentation to City Council. Daryl?
Thank you, Mr. Redner, members of the committee. It's really very simple. You guys know we're downtown, we're on Main Street, five thirty-one South Main, and we're a recovery center for folks who are dealing with addictions and mental health issues. And we've basically been, you know, a traditional downtown building with one large room. And we, we thought it would be nice to be able to add a little flexibility to our space and frankly, some anonymity for some of our more anonymous groups by creating a meeting space that could hold fifteen or so people for more private meetings. So we got that specked out by a builder at about forty-five hundred dollars. We've been, actually, the construction's already begun. People have already begun using it. It's a highly popular room, in fact. And it's really added to our ability to have groups. We've been able, since we added that room, we've been able to have a Narcotics Anonymous meeting startup. We're working on a group for folks that have addictions to pills, so on and so forth. It's really added to our flexibility.
Okay. I was, I think all of us intended the breakfast, the fundraising breakfast that raised twenty-eight thousand dollars or whatever it was at, and that was very well attended and showed a lot of community support for the, for the project. And I would certainly be in favor of financing this from, from the city's pool of funds.
Yeah, I agree with you, Jim. The thing, I was at the first breakfast, and then I was at this one, and there had to be double the number of people there.
There was.
And when you walked into that room, in addition to seeing the number of people, it covered a broad spectrum of people. So you're getting support throughout the community. That's great. And we've got some money in the budget that would handle this, and I, I support it. And not only that, but Walter Steed, whose chair I'm sitting in, supports it. It just, I gotta ask a few questions or talk a little bit, or Walter will feel cheated.
Yeah, Walter sent out an email that he was in favor of this, and so thank you for passing that along, John. Gina?
You do important work, and it does indeed touch every one of us.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I'm very much in favor of this.
Community support has been outstanding. You know, the challenge we have is we need to fill about a hundred and ten thousand dollar budget every year, and we are, we will, we're getting there, but we're not state-funded. You know, we're not guaranteed any state funds, so that public support that we saw stepping up this year or doubled last year, critical. And support from groups like yourself is also critical.
Yeah, I kind of feel that anything that you do in this regard that keeps a couple of people out of the criminal judicial system well pays for the forty-five hundred dollars we're investing.
And that's well phrased. A couple people can save tens of thousands of dollars, in fact.
Mr. Redner?
I was asked about the effectiveness, and I said essentially the same thing. I said, they come down to the Recovery Center, they don't end up in the emergency room. Some do, most don't. And anytime somebody does not end up in the emergency room, it's a positive, positive thing for them, for the city, and for the hospital. So, yeah, good deal.
Yeah, this is very similar to a request that came before the council a couple of years ago from Sojourners Alliance about supporting a project within that organization. Non-prioritized projects has fifteen thousand dollars, and as you recall, there was some funding that was granted to Sojourners because of their lack of stable funding last year. That was authorized by the City Council to be taken. We will be overrunning non-prioritized projects from a budgetary standpoint because the council obligated the, I believe it was eleven thousand, five hundred, twelve thousand, five hundred, I can't recall which, twelve five, from last year's budget. So this would come out of the original funding of fifteen thousand dollars in non-prioritized projects in the legislative budget.
Okay. I think this is an item we want to put on the regular agenda so that the entire council votes on this. So proceed in that fashion, that'd be great.
Will do.
Thank you for your input, Daryl.
Very good. When that is, Mr. Redner?
It'll be next Monday.
Next Monday. All right, I'll be there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five on today's agenda is Pullman Moscow Regional Airport Grant for Phase Four of the Runway Realignment Project. Gary?
My name's on a lot of stuff that I have very little to do with, so I'd ask Tony Bean, the Executive Director of the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport, to give one of his patented presentations on federal grants.
Good afternoon, Tony. I see you've got your season pass on for the airport there.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're important.
You can get in.
TSA likes them. I'm gonna wear it. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak. Federal grant cycle, this year's a little odd because it's come out in chunks. And it happened last year to us where we got, we made an application for funds, and then you ask for a grant and you get two grants because of how money's coming out. And one of the things that happened this year is the current budget authorization happened for, oh, let's see, October, and then it ends, their current resolution, their continuing resolution ends the twenty-eighth of this month, which allowed the FAA to get fifty-five percent of their funding, but not a hundred percent of their funding. So you, you have authority for fifty-five percent, you have appropriation for fifty-five percent, and then on the twenty-eighth, we're going to get a second federal budget. It's going to be, it's going to be different than what's been done in the past, where it's not going to be a continuing resolution. Because of the project's priority, the FAA requested an application from us early to be part of the first fifty-five percent, because it takes a long time. It takes about two months for the FAA's grant engine to really get going, to get money out. And with our project, we just had bids opened on the twenty-eighth. We have an apparent low. We all have an engineer's recommendation for the board at the end of the month. And the apparent low is the current contractor that's on site, that's all going forward, but the more time that they have to get work done, if we can start them in May, and if we have grant funding in May to get them started, that's a lot better than having grant funding in, in July, because you lose that much of a season. And the more, more that we lose, the longer it extends the project out, because they can only do day, work on days that they actually have weather. And so those are, those are valuable days to try to get done. So the idea is to try to get money as quickly as we can to get them started in a timely manner and keep the costs down. The Pullman City Council is taking action tomorrow to pre-authorize the mayor and the finance director and legal to sign off on a grant, and we would request the same from the Moscow City Council next week, is to pre-authorize the mayor's, because when the, when the grant gets turned, and Gary's seen this a number of times, they call me and say, Tony, you need to get signatures from attorneys and city council, or city mayors, and you need to do it, I need it by tomorrow, or you're going to lose the money. So it happens really, really fast, which is why the pre-authorization is so important. But the grant amount that we're requesting is forty-one million. We always over-request because at the end of the year, if the FAA has money, they'll, they'll provide it. The match of that is three million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. We anticipate getting a state grant from Washington State Department of Transportation, the Analytics Division, at two hundred and fifty thousand. So a total program of forty-four million dollars, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-two, which would go to the remainder of land acquisition that we need to do, and financing the remainder of the construction. And if there's funds left over, starting next year's construction, we also have to, to fund a what is known as a reimbursable agreement with the FAA, because they're going to own the instrument landing system. And the FAA can't pay themselves. They can't move money from airports and put it over in air traffic. That's called abrogation, and Congress doesn't allow you to do that. It's against the law. You don't get to just decide where you're going to money, where you're going to put money. So what happens is the airport side pays the sponsor, City of Pullman, City of Moscow, and then the sponsor pays air traffic. And that's how the, how the agreement works. But so that's going to come out of this grant as well. That'll entertain any questions.
And Tony, this is part of the overall program of up to one, a hundred and nineteen million dollars.
Correct.
So the match is in place or pending. I know the City of Moscow is now, we've made three five-hundred thousand dollar contributions. We have two more that are scheduled under the resolution set out by the City Council. So this is all done within that original funding package.
Correct.
That helps. Thank you for clarifying that.
This, this grant, in its entirety, would get us over halfway in the total funding of the project on the low end, right? I mean, with what we got last year, maybe sixteen million or something last year plus this?
Yeah, last year come in, in chunks. So we got sixteen first, and then we got eleven later. And this one's going to come in chunks again, too, but at least we can get, the idea is to get the, the amount, the engineer's estimate was twenty-two and a half, and we ended up with a bid, an apparent low bid. It's not finalized or anything, but it's about seventeen and a half million. If we had the seventeen and a half million, and the federal grant would be about sixteen million dollars, and then the local side would be the other million and a half, that gets the contractor started, and then we'd expect the remainder of the grant application to be paid in a second grant come later in the year when the FAA gets their full funding. But our priority right now is can we get the money upfront to get the contractor started as early as possible? Because they're still going to have the same amount of contract days, but if we can start them in May and we don't stretch into next year, it keeps the project, the total project cost, it keeps us in line with our budget.
But this resolution pre-author, pre-authorizing allows you, the council essentially is saying, except up to forty-one million dollars of grant from the FAA if it becomes available.
Correct.
I think this, this is something that we've pretty much decided we're doing, so it can be a consent agenda item. I think if everyone's in favor of this, and I can't see why we wouldn't be.
Okay.
So thank you for the explanation, Tony.
Thanks, Tony. And this will also be going next Monday, Tony.
Yeah.
Okay, item number six on today's agenda, Professional Service Agreement for Update of Pavement Condition Survey. Mr. Kevin Lilly will tell us about the pavement condition. I'm sure he'll have a, you know, complete report for us right now.
Great.
The sun's been out for twenty minutes, Kevin. You should be able to tell us what's going on with that.
Thank you for your confidence in me. It has been since two thousand thirteen that we have gathered inputs for our pavement management program. We feel like it's time to repeat that, calendar-wise, but also after the most recent winter, which has caused considerable damage for our pavements. So we have requested a scope of work and put it into an agreement with MDS Technologies, who did the survey the last time. They use a, two cameras mounted on a vehicle, scan all of our streets. We've had a few segments added since two thousand thirteen, so they'll pick those up as well. And then they analyze those in the office. The whole process takes about three months. And then we download those files into our Pavement View software. And it's just really been an efficient way to keep up on our road conditions. And we also are using it now for sign inventories, and we've been really pleased with that company. So this contract or agreement is in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars to repeat that process.
And when, when they're finished with this, since it's a downloadable thing, then you can get a pavement condition number for the city at large? In other words, you could say we're a seventy-five or a seventy-eight or?
Exactly. You can pull up a map. You can click on any segment, which are actually fairly short pieces of any street in, in town, and it will tell you the rating and the deficiency, what, why is it rated at ten or thirty or eighty, whatever.
Cool.
Yeah, and it's just a really good tool for making the most of the monies that we spend on maintenance. And as you know, our roads are, we're not holding our own, really, with, with the, historically with the funding that we've had, but this is just another tool to make that as efficient as it can be.
Kevin, this is something that happens every four years, five years, three years?
This is, this will be the second time we have done it.
Okay.
Using this system. A lot of cities will do it every two years, some every three. Three years was, was last summer. We felt like, yeah, let's get by for another year, but given the, the last winter, we think it's time.
I agree.
Me, too.
I'm in favor of the, of this, and I think it's a consent agenda item.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
No one disagrees with that. Thank you, Kevin. Item number seven is Amendment to Moscow Code Title Nine, Chapter Eleven, which has something to do with street vendors relative to farmer's market. Mr. Hall will tell us what's going on with that.
Good afternoon. What I have before you today is a proposed amendment to Moscow City Code to the title you referenced in the chapter, dealing with, under that chapter, dealing with the location of sidewalk vendors within the City of Moscow. The City of Moscow regulates vending operations within the public right-of-way in the downtown district, business district. And as part of that location regulation is that the city does not allow sidewalk vendors to be inside the farmer's market during the farmer's market operations. And the Moscow City Farmer Market operates from every Saturday from May and through all the, to the end of October. And a sidewalk vendor cannot operate within the market unless they qualify as a farmer's market vendor. What has been happening over the last few years since the city has moved the farmer's market to downtown is some sidewalk vendors who haven't, or were not able to qualify or chose not to participate in the farmer's market have been setting up their vendors right next to the boundaries of the farmer's market, creating an appearance that they are part of the farmer's market. And the farmer's market goes out of its way, and some of its rules and regulations get people in to keep the integrity of the farmer's market intact, so it qualifies as a true farmer's market. This proposed amendment would prohibit sidewalk vendors from being within two hundred feet of the farmer's market during the farmer's market hours. So it actually kind of create kind of a separation so that they would be distinct, the farmer's market would be distinct from any other vendors in the downtown area. And so what we're just asking is that Section D of Moscow City Code Title Nine, Section Eleven dash thirteen, dealing with location, is providing a provision that says no vendors permitted to conduct vending operations within two hundred feet of the farmer's market boundary during farmer's market operating hours from eight AM to one PM on Saturdays, beginning the first Saturday of May and ending the last Saturday of May, unless they are otherwise permitted under this chapter.
Last Saturday of October.
October, correct.
So, for instance, there was a vendor in, where the new diner is going to be there, is that inside or outside two hundred feet?
I would have to measure. I think that's, that would probably be two hundred if you're looking at the southwest corner of Jackson and.
Right.
Third Street. I think that is two hundred. We tried to make sure that it wasn't, you know, so far that they couldn't participate in downtown, but that there was enough of a separation. I feel basically they would have to be on the west side of Jackson. Same thing with vendors, would probably have to be on the east side of Washington.
Well, okay, so they were actually in the parking lot of the, of the.
They were on private property, so they would not be regulated by this.
They would not be regulated, okay.
This is in public right-of-way.
All right.
Like the sidewalk.
So then my question about the one that located in the parking lot across from the biomedical office building is as well, public, private?
As long as it's on private property, it would not be regulated by this ordinance.
Okay.
Kind of like the Taco Wagon that is operating now.
At the Anderson Group.
Yeah. I have no problem with that.
And to be clear, bricks and mortar businesses that are downtown, it doesn't disrupt their sidewalk vending situations like in front of the Mexican restaurant or whatever, where they have seating outside.
Sidewalk cafes.
Yeah, it doesn't affect that at all.
No, and also, brick and mortar downtown, on occasion, they're allowed to have sales adjacent to their property, so they could also participate, I mean, be having a sale and operation during that time period. They're not prohibited from that, because that's part of their normal business.
They're not a sidewalk vendor, licensed as a sidewalk vendor.
No, and to qualify, they can't rent that space out in front of it to somebody else. It has to actually be the business that operates on the inside that they move out to, like, doing a sidewalk sale.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I think it keeps the integrity of the farmer's market a little more well-defined, and people aren't crowding in, and they just don't want to pay the farmer's market fee and set up across the street from it. So I'm in favor of it. I think we can put it on the consent agenda.
Be regular agenda, it's an ordinance.
Oh, yeah, it is an ordinance. You're correct. Thank you.
Thanks, Rod.
Okay, now we have a report from Mr. McDonald on Sunnyside Avenue LID.
Good afternoon. Well, it's been a little time since I was last here to talk to you about this proposed local improvement district, so I thought it'd be helpful to just kind of give you a quick update on how we're progressing. This has been an interesting process. It's turning out to be fairly complicated in terms of who all the players are and all the moving parts and pieces that potentially will go into this. So I'll just take a moment and kind of run you back through what's being proposed as an LID, and then just kind of a little bit of a status update. So the concept here, again, we're down on the, the south, somewhat southwest quadrant of the city, US ninety-five Main Street here, Pluse River Drive, and the Sunnyside Avenue road section coming through here. And this is the portion that has not yet been completed and connected. This is built to the north, and this is built to the south, but we have a gap in here. And so the proposed local improvement district would involve essentially closing that gap, construction of the utilities and the roadway section, including curb and gutter and the sidewalk as required for that road section. The concept that we talked about very briefly, it's actually been about six or eight weeks ago now, was the idea of creating a local improvement district with a boundary looking something like this. And we have somewhat further refined that, and it is not there. Isn't that interesting?
[laughing]
Well, there is another drawing that is not there. That's really intriguing. Okay, the, the drawing that is not there, I will describe to you. It's essentially the same boundary, and what has changed in the timeframe since we last spoke was that this big piece here to the north has been split up into two lots with a boundary that's roughly shaped like that. Okay? And the plan for the westerly lot of those two is a proposed school site for potentially relocation of a charter school. And the easterly half of that big lot would be potentially broken up even further into individual lots that would be part of an affordable housing development. So what has happened then over the last several months is there are more players involved in, in the proposed LID area. The southerly parcel would remain with the current owner of all this, Juan Fletcher. And so then we would have potentially one owner here, a second owner here, and at least initially, a third owner here, and someday additional owners potentially there. So because of that, it's, like I say, it's complicated things a little bit in terms of sorting out, you know, what are the timelines for the different proposed developments which may occur here? Who are the players? What are the, the funding streams that are available to each of them to make sure it all can fit, that, you know, ultimately, all of them can handle the assessments that would come along with an LID if it is indeed formed and constructed? So that's been part of the discussion. There, there's a variety of things related to nonprofit entities such as charter schools and affordable housing, developments that have to do with grants and their schedules, and all the agreements that go along with that. So just my way of telling you that there's, like I say, a lot of complications that have arisen, but we are working our way through that. A lot of support from administration, Gary in particular, and Rod also from legal, helping us with sorting out how all this could fit together. We are working with the property owners and the applicant that's proposed a local improvement district. They're going to be working on appraisals of the property just to help ensure that the value is there. It's part of what's required under state statutes and local improvement districts, is that there has to be a certain amount of value available in the land to offset, essentially act as collateral towards any commitments through an LID. So anyway, that's in process as well. This is certainly taking longer than I think any of us anticipated originally, but we are still anticipating that it looks like it will be coming forward to the council for consideration at a future date. We are trying to make sure that we've dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's and get it to a point that it is, is. it to a point that it is as comfortable a proposal as it can be, and we've answered as many questions upfront as possible. The next step, when we come back, assuming we do, will be to come back here to this committee for a resolution of intent to form the LID. That would be then followed by a council meeting to consider that resolution, and then roughly three to four weeks after that would be a public hearing on the formation of the LID within which we would take public testimony for those folks within the LID boundary itself. So that's generally where we are right now, just really wanted to give you an update on the status, and hope you didn't forget about us.
So the, at this point then, we're working toward an LID agreement with three property owners?
At this point, that would be the plan during the preliminary LID formation. Potentially, there could be other property owners that come into play by the time we would finish construction and adopt a final LID assessment role. That remains to be seen, but that's part of the detail.
And you'd need two of the three to go along?
For the formation upfront, we need for the, the owners that are owner occupied is 60%, for non-owner occupied, we generally look at a 66%. At the moment, it's all one owner.
Yeah.
Would transition to two and then three, all of them are on board at this point, so we're looking at 100% if, if things stay as they are.
Currently, no one occupies that, there's one owner, there's no?
There's, there's one structure on the southerly lot, as I understand, it is unoccupied, but I, I can't say that for sure, but I believe it?
Has been quite some.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for the update on that.
If I may, could you go back a couple? It's a, if I may, it's a little bit different than our typical LIDs, as you can see, it's the last connection for Sunnyside down to Plous River Drive. If you look at the way that this is set up, there aren't a lot of connections down to Plous River Drive that service this neighborhood. You can either get out of the subdivision going up here, or essentially you come down here on Conestoga. So there's not a lot of, of places for this neighborhood to get down to Plous River Drive. When this first came in, and it was developed, piecemeal development was allowed by the city to go ahead and build chunks of the, the roadway, which left this fairly, it's not a huge, how many feet? 300?
700.
700.
700.
Feet, but it's, there are restrictions on the properties because of, this was a senior housing development, I believe, if I recall right, so there are some restrictions on the properties about how tall the properties can be. So it's a difficult piece of property to develop for a piece of roadway that's around a half million dollars to construct. There are a couple things that have gone into staff's assessment that this appears to be an appropriate place for an LID. First of all, because of the social utility of the affordable housing project, the council has supported affordable housing, both through our Fair and Affordable Housing position, Commission, support of the Moscow Affordable Housing Trust. Couple of years ago, the council, I believe, budgeted $20,000 toward affordable housing initiatives, so on and so forth, and the fact that there will be, at least at this point, appears to be a school that will go in right here, which also will need to have access, hopefully, both in and out from both ways. So if you look at that, this being a fairly expensive piece of roadway, some of the things that Les has been working on is to meet the Idaho Code, as he stated, the value of the improvements have to at least be equal to, if not exceeding, the value of the improved property, so that's one of the first determinations that needs to be done. So there's an appraisal being conducted on the property right now.
Vice versa, the, the value of the land has to exceed the value of the improvements.
I thought I said value of the land as improved, but either way, you get the point. Once it's improved, that value has to exceed the cost of the improvements themselves. So, at that, it's, as Les said, it's fairly complex, we're trying to get it through as quickly as possible. Some of these projects are looking like they will proceed, the roadway needs to be done this year if those projects are to proceed, so we're looking to see if that's possible. So, I think Les and staff is doing a pretty good job of trying to make it happen if at all possible, and if we can, we'll get that back to you as quickly as we can.
Seems like a project that's gonna happen, it's just getting all the pieces put together.
Yeah. We'll see. Staff has nothing further, sir.
Okay, thank you, Les. Entertained a motion to adjourn this meeting, then.
We adjourn.
Second.
Adjourned.